We acknowledge we're on the unceded homelands of Musqueam, Squamish and Tsleil-Waututh First Nations, and we give thanks for their generosity and hospitality on these lands. And we will start our public hearing with a roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Mayor Robertson in the chair, Counselor Louis. Counselor Stevenson, not in the chamber, Counselor Deal. Counselor Jang. Counselor Reimer. Counselor Ball, not in the chamber, Counselor Carr. Counselor Affleck. Counselor DeGenovas on a leave of absence for personal reasons. Counselor Bremner, not in the chamber. You have quorum, Mr. Mayor. Mayor Robertson.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. In order to, first, we start with our committee of the whole new procedure, and that is, in order to avoid the procedural uncertainties which arose at a previous public hearing, due to a loss of quorum while we were in committee of the whole, the city clerk has advised that while counsel is required under Section 1813 of the Procedure by law to move a motion to go into committee of the whole at a public hearing, it is not required to sit as committee of the whole during the hearing. Therefore, it's her advice that counsel consider the motion that is put to a vote and failed by counsel. So Counselor Louis will move. It's seconded, and all those in favor, any opposed? The nays have it. We do not go into committee of the whole. We sit as counsel. And that means that all motions need to have a seconder. Okay, so, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome again to City Hall Council chambers. We have four items on our agenda this evening, and lots of people registered to speak. Over forty people registered to speak between the four items. And primarily on Items One and Two, we have about twenty people each on this registered speakers to those items. So I think in order to hear everyone, we will likely not be considering the debate and decision of these, but trying to hear from speakers and refer the business and the decisions to our next council meeting in order that we can hear the speakers who are here tonight. If we do not hear speakers, who are everyone who's registered to speak, our backup is July the 11th, 2018, at 6:00 PM here in council chamber. So we do have a backup night scheduled, but probably for those of you who are here, you would like to get your opportunity to speak with counsel tonight. So I'll just go through the announcements with respect to speaking to counsel here. Speakers have up to five minutes to make their comments, and should make their comments to the merits of the report that's being considered. Speakers should also state whether they are in support or opposed to the recommendations that counsel is considering. Speakers may only speak once, up to five minutes. If you have additional comments, you can hand them in writing to the clerks, or you can email them to publichearing@vancouver.ca. And people who are speaking on behalf of three or more people or three or more organizations can have an additional three minutes, up to eight minutes to speak, but we ask that the, those individuals or representatives of the organization must also be present and not be speakers themselves. You don't have to use all of your five minutes. I will let you know as you reach your time limit. There is a timer on the podium, and you may have questions from counselors following your comments here. So that is the, those are the basics with speaking here at council, and we're ready to go into our first item, which is a text amendment, Amendments to Zoning and Development Bylaw and License by Law to Align with the Cannabis Control and Licensing Act. Madam Clerk, can you please read the application and summary of correspondence received?
This is an application by the general manager of Planning Urban Design and Sustainability, pending the legalization of non-medical cannabis and its sale within a retail outlet. Amendments are proposed to the zoning and development bylaw and the license bylaw to align these regulations with the federal and provincial regulatory frameworks expected to be enacted in late summer or early fall 2018. The following correspondence has been received since referral to public hearing and up until approximately 3:30 PM today, three letters dealing with other aspects of the application.
All right, thank you very much. And we have Catherine Holm here, and Kay Krishna is here as well, who's our general manager for, here at the city, for buildings and permits and licensing and all that good stuff. So over to our general manager, Kay Krishna, for some opening comments on behalf of staff.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, Mayor, council and members of the public. So we're here today to present the report written on May 29th and referred from June 9th council to public hearing. Staff, Catherine Holm specifically, who's our chief licensed officer, inspector, we have a presentation that summarizes the report. We also included in this presentation have an overview of just the general status of all of the other things happening around legalization. The report, as you saw, was really specific to cannabis retail and the zoning and development changes and the license bylaw changes required to enable retail within the federal and provincial legislative frameworks that are forthcoming. But there are a lot of other considerations around legalization, so we thought it was important to help at least very briefly provide some of the context of all of the other things that are happening. Given the dynamic environment and that a lot of the details, particularly on the provincial level, haven't been sorted out, staff will come back with a lot of those details. We also sent council a memo that essentially reflects the presentation today, and so there's a lot of details there, and we welcome questions following today. So I, what I'd like to propose or offer is, given the volume of speakers and the number of agenda items for this evening, if counsel would prefer to just go straight to speakers, we're happy to skip the presentation. I turn that back to you.
Okay, I think that would be appropriate, given we have so many speakers, and, but I will, as per our procedure here, give counsel an opportunity to ask any questions before we hear speakers, if any would like to do that. Anyone have questions before speakers? Okay, we'll dive right into our speakers list then. And that means, first up on the speakers list is Denise Brennan, Opiate Substitution Program Coordinator, Eden Medicinal Society. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Robertson and council. I'd like to draw attention to the fact that I am representing more than three people. We have been given the chance, as municipalities-
Excuse me, can you, so did you want extra time?
Yes, I requested extra time.
Can you just identify who the-
Eden Medicinal Society, we have four members present this evening.
Okay, they're here in the chamber?
They're in the upstairs.
Okay, upstairs.
I'm sorry, I wasn't aware I should have brought them in.
Okay, go for it.
Okay, thank you. Mayor Robertson and council, we have been given the chance, as municipalities, to tailor our cannabis legislation to the needs of our residents and communities. We owe it to our residents to take a deep look at what we want that legislation to achieve. Our decisions can be precedent-setting and benefit communities across the country and maybe even around the world, if we get it right. For the past six months, I've coordinated a cannabis-based opiate substitution study at Main and Hastings for the Eden Medicinal Society. This opiate substitution program provides safety-tested, high-quality cannabis capsules, and is a nonjudgmental approach to health care for individuals with chronic pain and/or dependency on opiates or other substances. The opiate substitution program is in a zoning limbo and would continue to be so under these proposed bylaw changes. This location is not an MMRU or a methadone clinic, but these are the closest classifications available, so as of Saturday, the program is closing due to a lack of supportive zoning. In these six months, we've observed among our participants not only a reduction in the use of opiates, but also in the consumption of alcohol and cigarettes. While the program is currently available at this standalone location, we've also created a step-by-step procedural guide to help administer the program at any cannabis store. The toolkit includes security protocols, product handling, data collection procedures, and more. Coming from this perspective and experience, we have three points for your consideration. Cannabis is not best regulated with the same rules as liquor. Density is the important measurement, not distance, and it is urgent to include the potential of cannabis as a harm-reduction tool. First, cannabis and alcohol are apples and oranges. Both cannabis and alcohol can be used as intoxicants, as with many pharmaceuticals, but cannabis has therapeutic benefits and uses, while liquor does not. An item in the Public Policy Report states, "The rules and processes established for MMRU permits are consistent with those of liquor stores and fit cleanly into the regulatory regime being implemented by the province for retail distribution of legal non-medical cannabis." We are concerned, because our current liquor laws are insufficient to begin with. Between 2015 and 2016, BC saw almost 15,000 hospitalizations caused solely by alcohol abuse, the highest amount by province in the country. In the case of alcohol, our provincial legislation isn't even working for the substance it was created for. We should not be enthusiastic about fitting cleanly into this legislation. We have to prioritize suitability over strictness in order to create legislation that focuses on harm reduction and public health gains. The objective in forming these bylaws cannot be convenience; the objective must be suitability. Focusing on distant, second, we need to consider density over distance. Focusing on distance between providers doesn't consider the reality of density amongst our different neighborhoods. Vancouver has a dramatically uneven population distribution. The downtown east side is one of Vancouver's high-density neighborhoods, at 9,147 people per square kilometer, not including residents with no fixed address. Leaving density out of zoning guidelines means high-density neighborhoods like the downtown east side cannot access support and therapeutic cannabinoid options as easily. Provincial legislation around access to medical cannabis is clear. People who need medical access can use the internet or their phone to order LP-produced cannabis to their residential address, presumably using a credit product or a bank account. But what about the people without access to internet, or a phone, or a bank account, or credit product, or a residential address? These are arguably the most vulnerable members of our society who can gain the most from therapeutic cannabinoids. People in areas without sufficient access to legal options will continue to turn to the black market for opiates and other illicit substances. Without a safe point of sale or therapeutic wisdom, this scenario benefits no one. In this respect, the important indicator is how populated an area is, not how far apart cannabis stores are from each other. Density is a more valuable consideration for public safety and harm reduction than distance. Third, cannabis shows significant promise as a tool for harm reduction. Former British Columbia Health Minister Terry Lake has said the same. An increasing body of - One in five residents are suffering from chronic pain and require medication. That's 20% of our population, double the number of people who voted in our by-election, and if you believe Gabor Maté, as I do, we are all in some way medicating for pain. Despite government efforts and an ongoing cost of $2 million, the opioid crisis continues to ravage our communities. Cannabis provides a safer option for pain management when administered by knowledgeable staff. Bylaws in zoning should favor cannabis stores committed to the principles of public safety and harm reduction. For better or worse, Vancouver's unique approach to servicing our most valuable population presents an opportunity to study how we can best solve the deepest problems of those afflicted with pain, loneliness, and dependency. We can't expect that cannabis stores in the current suggested definition will do this work. These bylaw changes fail to make the important distinction we have already made of Compassion Club. Our bylaw change should retain and develop this distinction further to encourage community responsibility. Policy is strongest when it protects our most vulnerable people. We urge you, mayor and council, to consider these essential aspects before adopting this legislative change. Cannabis is not best regulated with the same rules as liquor. Density is the important measurement, not distance, and it is urgent to include the potential of cannabis as a harm-reduction tool. We can do better, and we must, for the sake of public health and protecting the most vulnerable members of our society.
Okay, thank you very much for being here tonight to speak. You have questions from Counselor Carr?
Thanks, Ms. President, and thank you for coming tonight. Appreciate that. I have two questions. My first is if, if the issue is for you, density related to population density, is there a maximum number of stores that you can imagine in a high-dense area?
I think that definitely bears consideration to make the amount of points of access be related to the number of persons there, to a maximum that is comfortable for the community. I think the community consultation part is, is an important piece of this.
Okay, so you would suggest having, having that community discussion in order to determine what might be a reasonably, well, an acceptable level of density of stores in a neighborhood, per block?
I would say that that would be an opportunity for us to do further public consultation.
Okay. And I understand that you're opposed to the, the parts of this, these bylaw changes that limit the number of stores, so the per zoning, is that correct?
No, I'm not opposed to the bylaw limiting the number of stores. I'm opposed to the, the, the decision on stores being about distance from each other and not about servicing the population.
Okay, so that, is there anything else, or do you support some pieces of the, the recommended changes in this report?
I'm very reluctant to support any of the parts of this bylaw amendment.
Okay, okay, but very specifically, it is about the regulations regarding limiting the number of, based on distance?
Very specifically, it's about density being more important than distance. It's also about cannabis not being the same as liquor. And thirdly, it's about incorporating cannabis as a harm-reduction tool.
Great, thank you.
Okay, that's all your questions. Thanks again for being here tonight. Our next speaker is Robert W. E. Lory. Good evening.
Good evening, mayor and council. Yes, my name's Robert W. E. Lory. I am a lawyer. I'm also one of the legal counsel involved with the Vancouver test case and constitutional challenge. I represent 15 dispensaries, and of the 67 dispensaries who've received petition injunctions from the city of Vancouver, I've responded to about 40% of those. I oppose this legislation on the basis that it really doesn't address the issues that the city of Vancouver set out to address when we considered the content of the April 21st, 2015 Health Policy Guideline. I'd like to remind mayor and council the reasons why Vancouver took the brave step of regulating dispensaries in the first place was because there was a threefold recognition of cannabis as a harm reduction, as a substitute, and as a means of alleviating the opioid crisis. However, the zoning and the density by which Vancouver decided to regulate itself was based on Denver and Washington, or Colorado and Washington. I spent the last two months preparing expert reports for our test case, and I can report to mayor and council that 300 meters, as was recommended by city staff, they said was based on best practice. It's not based on best practice, it's based on U.S. federal criminal sentencing guidelines with the purpose, or called drug-free zone laws, that had the purpose of creating a disincentive from dealing any sort of a drug, and this again came in the context out of the crack epidemic in the 80s, by which if you were caught dealing drugs within 300 meters of a school, there would be an enhanced penalty and a separate offense. The nice thing about the expert reports we've received is it has appeared that the, the 300-meter buffer is not best practice. In fact, it's led a number of states to amend their buffers closer to 150 meters. Alcohol, we regulate through the liquor store guidelines in Vancouver with the suggestion that Section 4 of, liquor stores should not be located within 150 meters of schools and community centers. Dispensaries are 300 meters, which again makes no sense when you look at the liquor store guidelines, which, or the policy documents, which have a goal that mention 93% of Vancouverites should be within a 15-minute walking distance of a liquor store. Well, if that's, we take the basis of 150 meters and we play 300 meters, that means that some of our most vulnerable populations have to walk 30 minutes to access medicine. So with that in mind, I think it's important to note that the city of Saskatoon recently proposed to their council that 300 meters was, quote-unquote, "unduly restrictive." They proposed 160 meters. So I'd like to conclude with the, with the analysis that at the time the city decided to amend their bylaws, there was about 100 dispensaries and counting. Of those 100, only about 13 actually met the bylaw requirements at the time, which means 13% of existing dispensaries would be eligible for licensing. Of that 13, we've seen 19 actually being granted licensing, so when you do the math, this clearly amounts to a restriction on patient access, which affronts Section 7 of the Charter, which is life, liberty, and security of the person. I know Vancouver was very brave to step up and regulate cannabis, but now we're seeing that 300 meters is actually more of an elimination strategy than a regulatory policy. So if these new amendments are to work to bring Vancouver in conjunction and compliance with the provincial and the federal framework, which was a policy intention of this council, then you're on the right track with that. However, 300 meters is hardly an approach to regulating patient access. Again, with alcohol, we see concerns in the liquor store guidelines that involve vomiting, urination in public, increased policing, other issues which do not come up in the discussion involving the regulation of cannabis. The discussion has been more about what do we need to do as a city to ensure we don't get sued by another, another level of government? Fine, that is of course a risk and not policy analysis, but at the same time, it is failing patients. So with that, I'd like to conclude that the city of Vancouver should very much consider reducing the zoning and the buffering of dispensaries from 300 to 150, as that will enable and better facilitate the transition of this policy amendment. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much for being here tonight.
Thank you.
No questions for you? Speaker three is withdrawn. Speaker four is Jeremiah Vandermeer, followed by Ian Dawkins.
Yes, please lower it down a little bit here. Good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and counselors. Appreciate you guys having us here. It's an exciting time we're going into, and I think if we do things the right way, it will be even more exciting for the people in our community. I'm Jeremiah Vandermeer. Some of you guys might know me as the organizer of Vancouver 420, the big event that we have now at Sunset Beach that we've been doing in the city for over 20 years. I'm also the CEO of Cannabis Culture, which is a store here in Vancouver that has five locations, and we employ over 100 people in the city. Who are we? Well, Cannabis Culture's been at the forefront of marijuana legalization activism and business for 25 years. And originally founded, it was founded by Mark Emery. CC started long ago by opening head shops where we sold bongs, pipes, magazines, clothing, other things like that. Everything you need but the weed, we used to say. And more than 10 years ago, we started opening cannabis vapor lounges, where medical marijuana patients and recreational users can bring their own cannabis and consume it in a safe and comfortable environment where nearly all other spaces in the city were and still are hostile to pot users. In 1994, we started publishing an internationally distributed magazine called Cannabis Culture Magazine, and a few years later, in 99, 2000, we started Pot TV, our online video network, which does live broadcasting every day to the internet. Over the years, Cannabis Culture's become a world-famous tourist destination for members of the cannabis community and featured in media from around the globe. We really are a tourist destination that people come from all across the world and show up, and they're very, very happy to be in a place that they don't have in their, their homes. In the last few years, we've joined many other dispensary operators in the city and began opening full-fledged cannabis dispensaries, where customers can purchase safe, high-quality cannabis and trust from a trusted source in an environment of comfort. So legalization is coming here. We've been fighting a long time to become a legal business. In fact, it's been the reason for our entire existence. We are an activist business, and our number-one purpose is legalizing marijuana for all Canadians and ensuring their access to quality cannabis and related products. We've suffered through many years of oppression, discrimination, and stigmatization for our positive choice to use a safe substance as a medicine and a form of recreation, instead of the more dangerous and legal alcohol, tobacco, or coffee. So of course, we were pleased when the city of Vancouver announced its plan to regulate marijuana businesses in the city. We thought a lot of our work fighting for marijuana freedom was done, but we soon found out that because of strict rules around proximity, being too close to a school park or other dispensary would make it nearly impossible for most or all of our locations to be licensed, though we've been trying anyways. Now the federal and provincial governments are creating regulations that we can meet, but unfortunately, those city regulations, if they include some of that proximity to other dispensaries and, and schools, we might not be able to meet those. We have some issues with landlords, because anyone who's looked for a landlord that is a friend to the, that's friendly to the cannabis business in one of the approved zones knows it's nearly impossible to find those landlords. And when you do find one, and they're in that zone, they know they have an unfair advantage, and they charge prohibitively expensive rent. It's very difficult and expensive to move a long-established business to a new location if you can find one of these locations at all. We've got over 100 employees. All we want is to be legal. All we want is to be treated like all the other businesses in Vancouver. We're tired of being treated as second-class citizens here. Marijuana is not plutonium, and it shouldn't be treated as such. In my neighborhood in the West End, there's a liquor store and a pub directly across from a school, just a few doors down from another bigger liquor store. There are restaurants that serve liquor on every corner. I can even go into a barber shop just a few doors down from that school and get a beer while I get my haircut. Though I understand the reasoning behind proximity rules, can anyone here point to any actual harms caused by our marijuana dispensaries because of their locations? There are no bodies piling up. There's no demonstrable harms that we know of. So it really doesn't make sense to destroy all those jobs and stop the access to all of our customers, and that goes for all the dispensaries across the city that are in a situation just like ours, and there's a lot of them. So I'm here to ask you, on behalf of our 100 employees and thousands of our customers, to please help us transition our stores to the legal market, our stores and the many other longtime medicine providers in the city into this legal market. We want to be legal, that's all we've ever wanted. We ask that you devise a program that would allow for longtime dispensaries to become legal in their current locations. Now, my time's running out here, but I also wanted to quickly touch on vapor lounges, because I was here arguing for vapor lounges, I guess it was a few years ago now, when you guys put in a rule that put vaporization onto the books the same as consuming smokable products. We, at that time, you guys said you would come back to it because it was broken, and you guys promised that we wouldn't use it to go after vapor lounges in the city that help people. So I'm really hoping that we can come up with something that would allow for these historic lounges that we have and our historic stores to stay open and continue to provide the access to customers in the way we do. I thank you guys.
Thank you very much. Thanks for being here tonight. And next up is Ian Dawkins, followed by Frank Wilson, speaker number six. Welcome.
Thank you, mayor and council. Appreciate the time. As everyone else has said, we recognize that the city of Vancouver took a big step with the MMRU. It's a leadership role that I, as somebody who interfaces with regulators and government officials across the country, were frequently asked about Vancouver. I, excuse me, I should have introduced myself. My name is Ian Dawkins. I'm the acting president of the Cannabis Commerce Association of Canada. We represent a number of cannabis retailers here in the city, most of whom are licensed or attempting to get licensed. And it is on that note that I really wanted to get specific with my comments. I've been sort of struggling with how to address counsel today, because I've been through licensing applications with about a half dozen dispensaries now, and I've also, previous to this work, I've worked as a regulator myself. So I understand the job that staff are attempting to do and the difficulties of threading this needle, but as much as I want to give kudos to the city for all the hard work you've done and the leadership that you've provided on this file, my day-to-day interactions with the MMRU are, as a citizen, overwhelmingly disappointing. And that is something that, you know, it's never fun to deliver bad news, but I felt like I really had to stick up for some of the people that I've worked with and explain to counsel that how some of these interactions are playing out is not only not in the best interests of the city, or in the best interests of the citizens, or in the, the best traditions of public health, or good policy, but they're just going to react, you know, create a backlash against well-intentioned efforts both by city staff and by counsel to kind of thread this needle and get public support behind something that is admittedly a large transition. I think Rob hit the nail on the head by talking about the distancing and the ways that that has been problematic. I would echo his comments by pointing out that those distancing requirements were very carefully calculated by city- Hit a target on density, which, I'm sorry, I don't remember your name, my colleague from Eden pointed out, density isn't necessarily always a uniform thing, so I think those were good remarks that I would echo, but beyond that, city staff set density targets that were aimed at putting Vancouver in line with Denver as opposed to Seattle. That was what staff said. I can quote from the original staff report, "Both Colorado and Washington State require 300-" Both Colorado and Washington State require 300-meter buffer between a marijuana store and a sensitive use. Colorado also requires a 300-meter separation between the retail outlets. And it goes on to note that as a result of the differences between the two, Colorado ends up with a per capita of about 15 outlets per 100,000 people, where Seattle comes in much lower at about half that. And staff note that our, Vancouver's attempt would put us more in line with Denver at about 15 outlets per 100,000, which would be about 80 locations. We are now, what, two years into this process, and we have barely licensed 20. I would posit that unfortunately, that is not as a result of the bylaw as it is written, but is rather as a result of how the city is interpreting that bylaw when it comes across these applications. And there are problems with that. I have personally seen numerous applications that are 300 meters away from every sensitive site, including the Director of Social Planning secret list that he likes to ambush people with at the Board of Variance. And on that, of all of those applicants that have been rejected, they are all being rejected due to quote-unquote "significant neighborhood opposition." And when we do FOIAs on these letters, what we find are 10, 12, 15 letters, in most cases, that say, "I am against cannabis," or "I'm against marijuana legalization." "I don't like marijuana. There's too much marijuana in my neighborhood, too many locations already." And what these people are referring to are illegal, unlicensed, whatever you want to call them dispensaries that are in their neighborhood, that are either currently under injunction or not planning to get licensed or whatever. And whether or not you think that it is right for those other locations to be under injunction or to be closed, the truth of the matter is, these density clusters of unregulated activity are creating a real hardship for anyone who wants to move through the licensing process. And that is because they are triple-bound, as you might say. They, on the one hand, the city is not in a position to enforce the bylaw against these, you know, unregulated operators. They don't want to for whatever reason. However, they also don't tell the citizens of these neighborhoods that the reason why there are so many is a temporary glut that will change after legalization. And then finally, city staff don't take the extra step of reviewing those letters and putting two and two together from the first two points I just mentioned. So rather than recognizing that these 10, 12, 15 letters are not reflective of true neighborhood opposition and are instead reflective of anger at an unregulated cannabis environment, it puts the, everyone else in the position of having to justify or explain this to the people.
You're over your time.
I am speaking on behalf of a number of dispensaries here, so with respect.
You gotta give me that at the beginning.
Okay, I apologize. I thought that was understood with my...
You're speaking on behalf of three other people.
I'm speaking on behalf of a half dozen dispensaries here in Vancouver, three of whom are here today.
Can they identify themselves? And they're, you're not speaking? Okay.
Thank you. Apologize for that. I will summarize my remarks really quickly. I just want to point out that all of the well-intentioned changes to this bylaw that are going to be suggested today, I support many of them. We are going to need people who are incorporated, rather than societies, to apply for licenses. We are going to need a short window where licenses can be transferred, et cetera, et cetera. I echo many of the things that CAMCD is going to go through. But I want to point out that if we are in a place where staff, the city, I don't know where this instinct is coming from, I don't know who is responsible for it, but if we are in a place where significant neighborhood opposition is being measured in a dozen crank letters, we are never going to get out of this situation. We are never going to get people comfortable with cannabis. We are never going to create a network of well-established and well-run retail locations that give people public confidence in the system. It is a real problem right now that there are good applicants out there who are desperate to start this process and get ready so that day one, October 17th, they're ready to open their doors, and they're being denied, not because they're 300 meters away from anything, not because there's a good argument against them as an operator, but because somebody is angry about the situation as it is generally. And I think that that's a real missed opportunity for Vancouver, because as a result of this slowdown, we have lost a real window of time when Vancouver could have been a leader in this field. You look at the amount of cannabis tourism that is pouring into Denver today, because it is seen as a friendly city that has, you know, really taken the reins on this file. And at the same time, Victoria is taking our lunch in that regard. I would really like to see Vancouver step up to the plate and begin regulating these new applications, you know, getting everyone cozied up and in the house so that we can move forward with this. But that's going to require a different standard on these applications. And so I really think that the time has come. I understand that a lot of that frustration from staff is coming, because I know the pressure that they were under. I know that there was a lot of threats and a lot of nonsense that was directed at staff and council both. I think the time has come for a reset. I think we need to sit down. I think the medical cannabis community, the recreational cannabis community, and the city need to sit down, put our heads together, figure out some places where these bylaws can be tweaked and improved, look at the best practices from around the world, and make some significant changes. Because things aren't working as they should right now, and I don't think that's anything anyone intended. I don't think that it's a result that we want, but I think it's eminently changeable. So thank you very much for your time.
Okay. Thank you. You have questions, actually? From councillor Carr.
Yes. Thanks, Mr. Dawkins. Thank you for coming tonight. So you said that you actually support a number of the specific changes in this report. This report is very specific in its changes, bylaws, like the licensing.
Yeah, to be specific, I support a number of the additional amendments that are also going to be suggested, or either have been suggested to you previously or will be, including things like the need to allow incorporated entities to apply for licenses, the need to allow licensees to transfer their licenses, because while that's not normally allowed, say, in liquor licensing, this is in an analogous situation. There's people who have what are called tied houses. They own a retail, they own a production site. Under federal or provincial regulations, they won't be allowed to own those certain configurations, and they're going to have to divest themselves. So rather than, you know, force everyone into a bunch of legal fictions and a lot of lawyer's fees, we should just allow a small window where licenses are allowed to be transferred so long as the new applicant conforms with the city's requirements, things like that.
Okay. You've mentioned specifically that you are okay with some of these regulations. I'm just sort of paraphrasing. But you want different standards. I'm not sure what you mean by that.
What I mean is that at present, there is no uniform standard for how staff are viewing applications in the sense of what constitutes significant neighborhood opposition. Now, that's simply my interpretation. Unfortunately, I've never been able to have a conversation with staff about what's driving this, but it really does seem to be the case that these letters of quote-unquote "significant neighborhood opposition," when you read them, and I've read dozens of them, there's nothing there. And so if that's the standard that we're calling significant neighborhood opposition, I, as a former regulator, I'm uncomfortable with that. I, as a citizen of this city, am uncomfortable with that. That's a ludicrous standard. We would not accept that for condos. We wouldn't accept that for anything else. If people said, "I don't want a condo in my neighborhood because there's too many Sasquatches nearby," we would laugh them out. Why is it that "I don't like a dispensary in my neighborhood because cannabis makes dogs gay" an acceptable letter that we're going to consider opposition? Right? It's just, we need more clarity about what constitutes neighborhood support, how to get it, how to prove it, how to articulate it.
Okay. A fair comment. It's not one of the specific elements of this report.
No.
But I'll accept that. That comment is a general comment.
Yeah. I mean, I think that the view of the community is that while this bylaw is being open for specific purposes, there's a need, a crying need for a more general conversation about this bylaw, and that taking this opportunity when it is being opened to put these things on the table ahead of legalization is critically important, because, you know, the bylaw doesn't get opened very often, and we kind of have to catch our window, so.
Thank you for your honesty.
Okay. Thanks for being here. Next up is Frank Wilson, speaker number six, followed by Jaclyn Pahoda.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for... I'm here to address a couple of specific items in the bylaws as it pertains to security. I recently had an, by way of introduction, I'm a security professional. I have a license in the province of B C. I've been doing this for over 25 years. I recently had an opportunity to speak to New Westminster City Council, where I live, and they are looking at implementing bylaws, obviously with the new legislation that's going to take place this fall. And I recommended that they look very seriously at what Vancouver's done, because I feel that they are very good bylaws as it pertains to security. It's well-thought-out. It covers not only physical and electronic security, but operational security, which in the industry is quite important. Having said that, however, there are two exceptions, and I prepared a white paper, but I won't read it verbatim, because I don't, won't have enough time, but at any rate. Section 12, 2.26, and this is the issue, one of them anyways. "No person shall install security bars that are located within one meter of the front windows of business premises of a compassion club or retail dealer." In the industry, that, when I've done three dispensaries, I'm currently working on a fourth in the city of Vancouver, and it surprised me when I saw this regulation, or sorry, bylaw, because what the, if you take it at face value, once they're in the store, they then can either circumvent or work on the bars to get around them to gain access to the rest of the facility. If the bars are up against the window, and I understand what the city's done, is they don't want bars and/or roll-down shutters or opaking, and all those are good, but I don't understand why you couldn't have roll, sorry, scissor shutters across the window. The problem when you get into the store is that the one-meter setback on a small location or small retail location creates a problem for seating. If you did want to have a shutter or the rolling bars after hours, it just makes it very awkward to place furniture and/or seating or layout your store. So with that in mind, I'd like to review, there's alternatives. One would be the status quo, which is not doing anything at all, but that leaves these dispensaries at risk for broken into, being broken into, and then people gaining access into the rest of the store. The other alternative, which I'd already mentioned, is the retractable scissor-style bars. Now, they can be left out of the way during the day, but only brought across at night. One of the city's requirements is not to have opaking on the windows, i.e. to be able to see and have clear visibility so that the people are obviously not serving underage people, or something, perhaps a, you know, a robbery taking place in behind an opaque window. So that's good. But the scissor bars can be left out of the way during the day and then brought across the window without a one-meter requirement. So I'd like to recommend that that be changed. It'll provide an effective deterrent to criminal activity, as the bars against the window will properly delay somebody trying to break into a dispensary. So I'll leave that one. And then the second, and this also is interesting, page five, section 28c, a requirement for a security and fire alarm system that is monitored at all times. It's very understandable to have a monitored security alarm system. That is, would almost be a given. But the fire alarm, to my mind, puts an undue onus on what is typically a very small 1,000-square-foot, 1,200-square-foot retail location that, to my mind, or to my understanding, no other location typically has to do. It's usually only covered under regulatory requirements, i.e. if you're large, or part of a larger building whereby they would, because of their loading and their fire requirements would require a fire alarm. But for a small shop, it's a $5,000 to $10,000 bill typically to install a standalone fire alarm. You can monitor fire alarm devices through your intrusion alarm, and I applaud the idea that it has to be a monitored security alarm or intrusion alarm, but to have a standalone fire alarm is an undue cost, I feel, to retailers. So with that, I'd like to just recommend that those be reviewed and looked at in changes to the bylaw.
Okay. With that, I'll take my leave.
Thank you.
Unless there's questions. No questions for you. Okay. Thanks for being here tonight. Speaker number seven, Jaclyn Pahoda is next, followed by Tony Ali.
My name is Jaclyn Pahoda, and I work in the cannabis space as a consultant for dispensaries and other folks who are trying to be regulated. And I'm here specifically to object to the 300-meter distancing requirement that's, you know, being carried forward.
Do you move a little closer to the mic?
Right. Being carried forward through the proposed amendment here. I have seen firsthand that it doesn't seem to work. It doesn't seem to limit the density of dispensaries. It doesn't seem to really function to keep them away from school because of, schools and other places, because of the appeals process that's available to dispensaries. So I think it would be simpler and less of a waste in terms of city staff and the Board of Variance's resources if we were to look at amending that to something more reasonable, like 150, in terms of restrictions. That is what I would like to say today. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks very much for being here tonight. Next up is Tony Ali, followed by speaker number 10, Aaron Richardson.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So here I am. Thanks for having me. I spoke before, in front of you, council. I was speaking on Main and Broadway. In terms of, oh yeah, I'm Tony Ali, owner of The Healing Tree. I've got one on Main and Hastings, one on Main and Broadway. I spoke years ago about dispensaries aligning ourselves with licensed producers and producers in pharmaceuticals and all that. So my vision for that is still kind of standing. I'm still standing by that. But the 300-meter rule, I'd like to ask the mayor and the council, why are we copying another country? Why are we not being independent in our thinking? You know, like, I'm a Palestinian, you know, I've been through all kinds of zonings and laws and governments and whatever. I've come to think that the only way to survive is for independent thinking. When you're trying to copy a country, the spacious, like Colorado, you know, you've got like wide highways, everything, 300 meters might be very logical there, correct? When you're looking at a city like us, where we're rural, like, we're very compact, I mean, thanks to your environmental outlook, you've been very, you know, vigilant in doing bike lanes and all that stuff, and the Cambia Bridges has been reduced even more to allow bikes to get on the bridge. So by doing that, you are, in essence, you know, creating an identity for Vancouver, around the world to be environmentally friendly, right? So why not create an independent image for Vancouver to be cannabis-friendly, medical cannabis-friendly? Like, we are a rural city. We cannot abide by the 300-meter rule. It doesn't exist. It doesn't make sense. It's not logical. So therefore, we are copying a country where it is much bigger than us, where the state of Colorado, it's not even a country, but the state of Colorado is bigger than the province of, well, the city of Vancouver. So you can't really make that analogy. It doesn't make sense. It's not logical. From an intelligence point of view, you know, like, I mean, 300-meter rule, we're being copycats. We're not being originals in our thinking. So we should really look at logically, how does that 300-meter rule affect our citizens, tax-paying people like me? Like, I mean, I've been going through the system, I've been abiding by the Vancouver Police Department regulations, Mayor Robertson's guidelines, the councils, all of you, all these things I've been doing. Thanks to you guys, one of my dispensaries does have a development application, and I will be applying for a license. So I'm really happy with that. And it was, and it was in a place where it was near a school, but thanks to your commonsensical approach to the, to the, to my argument, you saw it was valid to be there. So therefore, if you're seeing that I'm valid to be near a school, why are other dispensaries not valid to be near a school? I'm not here to push the subject of that, but the thing is, is we have to be fair. I had one dispensary open after me, you know, on Main and Broadway, and they got their license based on the city's lack of argument that they presented to me. They presented a different argument to them. So we have to have a standard, uniform argument where the city reviews these files. They opened after me, but then they got this, they got their license approved. It's like, that doesn't make sense to me. So I agree with Ian when he was talking about the discrepancies in the council's approach to these applications. So my request, I'm on my last 50 seconds here, my request is to really look at the 300-meter rule, because it's really going to be detrimental to the access of patients to come to our dispensaries, because we are a smaller city. We're not as big as Colorado. That's basically where we need to be independent in our thinking. 25 seconds left. Twenty-five seconds left, so thank you very much for your time, and I do, I do really, really, really thank you guys for being the first city in Canada to actually be creative in masterminding this approach. So thank you, guys. We're on the right step, but let's be together in this. Let's not separate us from you. Let's work together. Thank you.
Thanks very much for being here tonight. No questions for you? Thank you for your time. Next up, speaker number 10, Aaron Richardson, followed by Don Briere. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for having me, Mr. Mayor and Council. My name is Aaron Richardson. I'm the vice president of the Canadian Association of Medical Cannabis Dispensaries. As you know, we've been instrumental in the implementation of the MMRU bylaw here in Vancouver, and our organization represents many of the licensed and in-stream stores currently in Vancouver. I'm here, originally my intent was to come here and talk to you about what we think might be the best modifications to the existing bylaws, but having met with many of the licensed and in-stream stores, we are gathering that information that we would like to submit to you as a gesture towards working together in this sort of legalization climate. The provincial regs that are going to come down after we have royal assent of C-45 will likely require some changes to the bylaw as we have it now here in Vancouver. So, you know, we ask that, we were included in this formation of this bylaw, we were consulted, and we were instrumental in the implementation. We really appreciate that same consideration now that we're on the cusp of a great change, a monumental change, and we want to make sure that we do this right. We have an eye to the street, an ear to the street, I should say, and we are, we have a lot of people's interests in mind, there's a lot of different opinions, but we believe that there's a common ground that we can strike with the city, and we really look forward to working with you on that basis. That's about it.
Okay.
Any questions for me?
No questions. Oh, Councilor Carr, you have questions?
I do. Sorry, my mic's not on. Thank you. You said you were consulted, now I might be misinterpreting you, but you say that was on the, sort of, the first medical marijuana regulations, but were you consulted on these regulations? I'm not quite sure if I understood that.
On the current amendment?
Yes.
That's being proposed? No, we weren't.
Okay, but you were consulted in the original, the original regulations that we developed for?
During the formation of the actual bylaw to allow medical cannabis dispensing in Vancouver.
Okay.
And, you know, we have a very proud industry here. We've had successful medical cannabis dispensing for 20 years now in Vancouver. It's, this is part of a, you know, a service, a community service that we have the ability to provide to the world as a leader, so.
Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Okay. Thanks for being here tonight. Don Briere is next, speaker number 11, followed by Jason Lamarche.
Hello, Mayor and council members. Thank you for allowing us to speak tonight. I'm here, Don Briere, representing 200 staff and cannabis workers that we have working with us. We've been operational for five years. We are paying all taxes, GST, PST, WorkSafe. We pay personal income tax, we pay corporate taxes. We're good business citizens, and we're looking to continue employing and keeping people working. What we do is, we do something that other businesses don't do. We drain money away from organized crime. They buy guns, heroin, cocaine, they shoot at the police, sometimes stray bullets kill people. And the worst thing that they do, though, is they take our young children and they turn them into drug addicts, criminals, and human prostitutes. So again, this is a really good thing that we're doing here to take the money away from the organized crime and focus on, have our police focus on the more dangerous things, violence and the hard drugs and fentanyl. People are using cannabis as an exit drug to get off, and they've been using this for many, many years. You can see the damage that tobacco, alcohol, and other drugs causes. We, on the other hand, help people. When the government says you can't use edibles, that means anybody who has lung issues, cancer, any kind of problem like that, what are they going to do? Wait for a year and/or die while they're waiting for edibles? Cannabis has been around for a long, long time. It's not something that's just popped out of the sky from somewhere. If you, anybody can remember Woodstock, they were making cookies back then. And as far as I can tell, unlike fentanyl, I don't think anybody's really died from it unless, you know, they weren't paying attention and fell off a cliff or eating a cookie. But other than that, I think that what Vancouver has done, they've shown the world that we are the leaders, and we've taken a lot of money away from the wrong people, and we are putting it into society. And so I would think that we would continue to let free enterprise operate. I would think that, like a shoe store or anything else, if there's too many of them around, the ones who can't operate properly will have to close and go away. So I think that allowing 150-meter rule would be something that would help generate good, strong businesses and strong competition. And so anyways, once more, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to speak, and good night.
Thank you very much, Mr. Briere. Thanks for being here. Next speaker is Jason Lamarche, speaker number 12, followed by Taryn Mann.
Hi, bonjour. Mayor, council, thank you for having me here today. My name is Jason Lamarche. I'm a Vancouver resident, Canadian citizen. I've been in Vancouver since about 1997. Ran for council in 2011, got 37,000 votes, didn't make it, but I went on to many other projects and learned all sorts of other things about Vancouver. Prior to my involvement in this beautiful city and with all the great people that live here, I had happened upon all sorts of drug encounters of my own. And I say that because, keep in mind that my father unfortunately had substance abuse issues as I was a child growing up, and so I was exposed to many things as a child. And, you know, in Vancouver, there's a lot of harm reduction and drug abuse problems happening all across the city, and the cannabis substitution project that is happening in the downtown east side, that is a project that is operating, you know, largely out of legal parameters, but it's being facilitated, because if you look at the actual harm reduction strategy of the city of Vancouver, it has been a multi-partisan collaborative effort across party lines, and it's been putting people's health and safety and economic well-being first, because you can't have a community if you don't have these opportunities. And now, all we see every day is more headlines about people moving out of the city, and the rent's going up, and everything is being skewed towards a narrow elite group of people. And it's just, there needs to be clear pathways for people, because, you know, if the plan is just to go in another direction, well, I don't know how sustainable that is, but I realize that this is, you know, focused on the actual cannabis bylaws, and all I'll say is this: congratulations to the city of Vancouver for the work you've done so far. I had the great honor of speaking to Mayor and Council of SeaShelt just a few days ago, and they were very well receptive to this whole concept. And in fact, what they did is they created an entire pathway of continuity for their existing dispensaries in SeaShelt, because you know what they did? They recognized that there is phase one of all the great work Vancouver has done so far, and then there's intermediary period right now, which is where we're going to transition into this legal regime of cannabis going from a provincial hub. And there needs to be a plan and recognition of the people and human lives that are active in this capacity right now, because if we're not recognizing human lives in the city, well, you know, that could be a fundamental problem with the downtown east side, too. Like, who are those people, right? Brothers, sisters, mothers? My dad was down there. Looked me in the eye. My dad was down there. Je parle français. On parle français, okay? Est-ce que je parle français ici, quelqu'un? Parle? No? That's all I'm trying to say. These are real-life stories, and the facade's gone. Look at the headlines. The war on drugs is over. Cannabis is legal. It got royal assent for recreational purposes. It's legal. It's going to take a while for society to even achieve a mind shift of understanding what that means, but it's really monumental. Essentially, I think of it as the fall of communism in Canada, because if I look at the political underpinnings of what's going on here, and the way the markets are distorted, and the political alliances that are being forged in our own backyards to create these environments, to create these conditions, to create these political outcomes, it's really transparent. People have learned a lot on the internet since, like, 10 years ago, and the discussions keep going. And you know what? Some of it's fueled by cannabis, and I think that's a good thing, because you know what? If you want to look at the sum total of the universe, it's the subject and the object, right? It's the known and the unknown, and you can't have a society or a planet or a future without recognizing cannabis and incorporating it into your society. And I say that because cannabis has very many interesting properties, such as hemp, agriculture, industry, goes on and on. Paper, the opportunities are infinite. Buckminster Fielder, he was right. It is. It's ephemeralization, or whatever he called it, but it's the ability for human beings to create unlimited wealth and prosperity if they have the right motive, and you can only tap into that through free enterprise, which is why I compared the fall of the cannabis laws to the fall of communism, because that was a restriction of opportunity and freedom. It's like a new, different world. We have freedom, okay? And that was the extension of a free enterprise shift, and that's another big shift that's going to happen sur toute la Canada, et on va parler de ça en public, okay? C'est vrai. I love this city. I was born in Ottawa in 1976. I'm a sixth-generation Canadian citizen. I speak French. I grew up in Quebec until I was 20, and I've been in Vancouver since 97. I love this city. I love Vancouver. I love British Columbia. J'adore Canada. Ça c'est mon message pour vous. Et j'adore toutes vous pour toutes vos efforts sur le fil du cannabis. Si tu comprends ça, merci bien. Questions?
Thank you for being here tonight. And we are on to number 13, speaker number 13, Taryn Mann, followed by Krish Sidhu. Welcome.
Hi. I would like to thank Mayor and the council for having us all. I would like to have just two points that I want to get across. The first is, the distance should be around 150 meters, because there is, we shouldn't leave the pockets for the black market to operate between the dispensaries. And the second point is, like, corporations, big corporations are taking over, like in Edmonton, they have, I think, they've got 25 leases down, and then they're getting the licenses. So there should be something for the small mom and pop stores, like, they can operate and they can do their business. That's all I wanted from the council to take into account, so that they can put a cap on the big corporations, so that they don't have the monopoly in this new recreational market. The simple, like, mom and pop stores, they would have also preferences in the city. That's all I want to say. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much for being here tonight. Speaker number 14, Krish Sidhu, followed by Bert Hick.
Mr. Mayor, council, thanks for your time today. I'm specifically talking, first of all, myself, I'm Krish Sidhu, President and Director of Wealthshop, happy to say we're the first licensed dispensary in Vancouver, so I want to thank you all for that. My comments are very specific in regards to the draft bylaw to amend License bylaw number 4450 regarding specifically section 24.5. We note that in the staff report, it was acknowledged that the license bylaw includes a number of restrictions on MMRU's, which are likely unnecessary as control of licensees would now be a provincial responsibility. It was recommended that those restrictions not be reviewed until one year post-legalization. With this specific reference to 24.5, it was recommended the council replace retail dealer, medical marijuana-related, with retail dealer cannabis, and that marijuana with cannabis. Although it was proposed to strike out subsections 23 and 24, all other restrictions would then remain, including 24.5, section three, that no corporation shall carry on the business of a retail dealer cannabis except a society. Pursuant to the Cannabis Control and Licensing Act, a license can be issued by the province to an individual, partnership, corporation, or indigenous nation. In our submission, it is reasonable that the city of Vancouver adopt a model to license retail dealers of cannabis post-legalization that would continue to prevent corporations other than societies from carrying on this business. A bylaw restricting a retail dealer to an individual or a society is overly restrictive when the province will permit corporations, individuals, or societies to obtain a provincial license. I think it looks like everyone that I've spoken to knows that this isn't a good idea, and to leave the restriction in place, that ultimately, hopefully, it probably won't. I think that the issue that needs to be brought up to their, to everyone's attention is in regard to the provincial application portal, in that the portal will open anytime, and in fact, was expected to open last week. In order to start the process, interested parties have to make a decision on how they're going to apply. So corporate documents for the application are required. It makes it near impossible to know how to apply to the portal. Do you apply as a company and then risk that the proposed changes are implemented, so that a company can't get a COV business license? Or do you apply as a society only to have them ultimately, change the bylaws, so a company would then have to be permitted, but you're stuck with now proceeding forward as a nonprofit model? So it makes it a bit confusing now for us, trying to navigate the licensing procedural process, securing leases, moving forward in the dynamic. That specific point hopefully makes a lot of sense to just follow what the province is doing and have an individual corporation and such, and not limit it to just societies. Thank you.
Thank you very much for being here tonight. And the next speaker is Bert Hick, speaker 15.
Good evening, your worship, members of council. I've been peering before you for this council for over 30 years as a liquor licensing consultant through my company, Rising Thai Consultants, and prior to that, I was general manager of the Liquor Control Licensing Branch in Victoria. I come to this debate a little bit of a different perspective.
Do you just shift closer to the microphone?
Sorry. What I, in my perspective, is I'm concerned about the unintended consequences of the distance criteria that are set out in this bylaw. I'd like to suggest that your staff be given exercise discretion capability to look at every application on its own merits and make a judgment call and recommend to council whether they support it or don't support it. The reason for this is I can see the opportunity, some real problems coming up. Now, let's look at the liquor world. The Liquor Control Licensing Branch has a policy, you have to, can't have a liquor store within a kilometer of another liquor store. That produces problems. For example, you've got a wonderful development coming up here by West Bank called Vancouver House. They have ground floor retail. What a great place to have a liquor store, an upscale liquor store, similar to the one we did at the Sutton Place Hotel, but we can't do it because of the existence of another liquor store at the corner of Drake and Granville, on Granville Street, where it's not a store you go to to get a quality Chardonnay. You go there to get a single can of beer. Give you another example, Karen McSherry's Gourmet Warehouse, Clark and West Hastings, East Hastings. She would like to have a liquor store that would be restricted just to the sale of wine, complement the gourmet warehouse, but she can't do it because of the one-kilometer proximity to a liquor store at the Astoria Hotel and one at the Waldorf Hotel. But it'd be what a great place to have it. So when I look at this with a 300-meter distance criteria, I get concerned. We have a client who wants to open up a very high-end edible store, top-of-the-line chocolates, world-class, best chocolates infused with cannabis. You won't be able to do it because of existing proximity to an existing store. Give you another example that we face in the liquor world, one of the policies you have at the city is if councillor Stevenson owned a neighborhood pub of 65 seats in a community in Vancouver, and councillor Jang wanted to apply to have another pub close to his within a close proximity, the policy will not allow it to do it, even though one might be a pub and the other one might be a martini bar or a cocktail lounge. And these create problems. The other problem I have is you've got a large population here to be served, and people my age, I'm 65 now, they use cannabis for medicinal purposes. I've got friends, one's a doctor, one's a nurse, they use it for medicinal purposes, and they want to go to quality stores to access this. One's got Crohn's disease, the other one's got cancer. So I think that there needs to be some further dialogue on this issue. There are a lot of cannabis conferences going on right now. The thing that amazes me, there's one yesterday in Vancouver down at the Sheridan Wall Centre Hotel, there's one up in, there's one up in... Hotel, there's one up in, there's one up in Whistler that was liquor and cannabis, there's one in Kelowna a couple of weeks ago. There's nobody there from government, whether it be from the liquor distribution branch, the Liquor Troll Licensing Branch, or from municipalities, except for the one in Kelowna, the folks from the city of Kelowna were there. But they need to be a dialogue, they need to be talking to these operators to get an understanding of what you're doing. Because once you put into place in a bylaw that it can only be, you have to be 300 metres away, it gets etched in stone, and it's very hard to undo it. So I'd like to see some further dialogue, and I would also encourage you to allow the existing retailers to be invited into the process and participate. And we talked earlier, speakers spoke about the distance criteria to schools. Well, it's interesting that your policy guidelines for liquor stores says the liquor store has to be 150 metres from a school. And yet minors are allowed in a liquor store, accompanied by a parent or guardian. But yet, your policy says it has to be for cannabis, it has to be 300 metres away from a school, and yet no minors can even cross the threshold, not even accompanied. So I'd like to see more dialogue on it. I also want to compliment you for taking the leadership, bringing in this bylaw several years ago. I think it was terrific, but I think every case should be assessed on its own merits, and I'm concerned about the unintended consequences. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much for being here tonight, Mr. Hick. So Dana Larson is our last registered speaker. Or no, we've got three more that signed up tonight, so he's followed by Neil Magnuson. Welcome.
Thank you for having me here. Although I find this debate kind of frustrating, we're in a city in a country that is in the midst of one of the most serious health crises of ever, people dying in very large numbers of overdose crisis, which to my mind is not really a drug crisis, it's a prohibition crisis. It's a crisis caused entirely by government policy. And we spend our time debating about dispensaries and 300 metres, and yet it's as if cannabis is the problem, but cannabis is not the problem. Cannabis is the solution, or at least a big part of the solution. There's plenty of research showing that when cannabis is more widely available, opiate users use less opiates, and there are less overdoses. And I would like to see the time we're spending debating on dispensaries, and how this futile quest to shut down the 100 dispensaries in the city, which is not going to succeed, by the way, we should be talking about how to get safe, clean drugs to people that need them. That should be the top priority. Keeping people alive should be the top priority of any government in any city council. And dispensaries, right now, are helping to keep people alive in this city. Our dispensary donates a very substantial amount of cannabis and edibles and extracts to the Cerebolize High Hopes Foundation, and also to the Cannabis Substitution Project. And we do that because we recognize that cannabis helps people to stop using opiates, and that saves lives in our city. And if you succeed in your effort to shut down 100 dispensaries in the city, and replace them with a dozen or two dozen government-run stores, which will only have buds, no extracts, no edibles, no capsules, no suppositories, none of the products that we sell at our dispensaries that are truly medicinal and benefit patients that need them, all you're going to succeed in doing is causing a lot of harm to a lot of vulnerable people, and increasing the already high number of deaths that are happening in our city. And it's going to be a few years at least before the federal and provincial program is able to provide the same broad range of products that dispensaries are now providing. And these are the products that really have the most medicinal value. You know, I'm all for smoking raw buds and for raw cannabis, but that is not where the real medicinal value of this plant lies. It is in the extracts, and the edibles, and the capsules, and those kinds of things. And none of those are going to be available through these shops. They're going to have a small selection of cannabis, probably higher price than that's available on the open market of dispensaries or in the black market. If you manage to shut down all the dispensaries in the city, because the bylaws that you've got in place make it impossible for the vast majority, 80 or so dispensaries simply cannot comply with these bylaws as they exist, no matter what they do, they cannot comply without shutting down. The only result will be more delivery services, more mail-order services, and a lot of vulnerable people not having the cannabis they need. And so I would urge you to go slowly. Give the federal government and the province the time to catch up to what's already happening. Give them time to figure out how to legalize edibles and extracts, and make those things available. Because I really believe the only way to shut down dispensaries in the city, if that's your goal, is to have higher quality, lower price, broader selection of products available at some kind of other shop. And I know that a lot of dispensaries are hoping to transition into the legal model, but for me, I don't know if I want to do that, because I don't want to have to cut off thousands of members and tell them, "Sorry, I can't sell you the medicine you've been providing you for the last 10 years in this city, the last decade." Because now we're not allowed to provide any of those medicinal products anymore. All we can do is sell you raw buds in a package that comes from a licensed producer. I see the long term. I don't know if my dispensary is going to be around in five years or 10 years, but for the next few years at least in this city, we need dispensaries to continue operating the way they are, to help provide us a buffer against the opiate overdose crisis, the prohibition crisis, which is caused entirely by federal, provincial, and municipal policies of prohibition. Give us some more time to continue doing what we're doing, and providing medicine and cannabis to those who need it. I don't think you'll succeed in an effort to shut us all down anyways. I think these bylaws are ill-considered, and I would echo the message that everyone else is giving, that if you could just change one thing in these bylaws, that 300-metre rule is the worst rule, which means there is not enough space in the city for dispensaries, or legal shops, or whatever they are, to provide the cannabis that is needed in Vancouver to meet the demand. So that's my message to you. Dispensaries save lives. Cannabis saves lives. Cannabis is not the problem, it is part of the solution to the opioid crisis. And I hope you will consider that, because saving lives should be the top priority of any government. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. No questions? Thanks for being here tonight, Mr. Larson. And our next speaker, our next, before councilman Neil Magnuson, followed by Mason Nattou.
Mayor and council, thank you for having this debate, and thanks for having me. My name is Neil Magnuson, I'm the Director of the Cannabis Substitution Project. Well, here we go again. We came here, all of us and more, a few years ago, the first round of public hearings on regulations for cannabis dispensaries. We spoke to you in unison about our concerns, only to have you impose outrageous and overbroad regulations. We spoke about the concern about over 19 only, about no vapor lounges, about no edibles, about no delivery, no mail-order, no ATMs, the ridiculous licensing fee, the criminal record checks, and that 300-metre rule. Hundreds of people spoke to all of these in unison, and yet nothing was done in respect for what they said, you just went right ahead and harmed people. Many good people have been harmed as a result of your regulations on these dispensaries, people losing their job, people losing access. So forgive me if I feel like this is just a waste of our time, and you're just going to let us speak so you can say that we did, and then carry on with the imposition of more discriminatory, unjustified, oppressive regulations. Not to mention, this is a lame duck council anyway. I can only hope that the new council, whoever they are, review what's said here today, and has a good listen to what people are saying, because we're being very clear about our concerns here. Canada's a great country, I'm happy to be here, I love the people, and I love the spirit of Canadians, but I got to tell you, sometimes I'm not very happy with our government. And in Vancouver too, it's a city filled with amazing people. I was born here, I've lived all my life here. But here again, I must say that I'm embarrassed at some of the decisions of our city government, especially on this file, primarily with this file, with respect to the issues regarding cannabis dispensaries and drug prohibition. The activists in this city have a long, proud history of speaking to the harms associated with the attempting to prohibit drugs. Unfortunately, far too often, we've had to be very aggressive in getting city council to come along with us. Instead, Vancouver should be and could be leading the way in drug policy reform. But so far, this is not the case. We're following Colorado and the United States and their policies, as if we should be following them. All one needs to do is compare the cost to society from alcohol and tobacco, and then compare the regulations controlling the thousands of recreational alcohol dispensaries in this city, compared to the restrictions on cannabis dispensaries. Cannabis is not a recreational drug-like alcohol, it's a medicine. Dispensaries cater to medicinal needs. The laws attempting to prohibit cannabis are not only wrong, they are seriously harming people, not just by unjustified criminalization, but by restricting access to the relief of pain and suffering of people. If this city council won't stand up for the rights of its citizens who are being harmed by bad cannabis laws, then it should at least stand up for the sick and the suffering. The majority of Vancouver's dispensaries serve hundreds of, and thousands of sick and suffering patients, who find relief from a large variety of edibles and concentrates that will not be available in this non-medicinal store. By definition, they're non-medical. So this is in fact a very bad day for medical users with the so-called legalization of cannabis, which is really an attempt to monopolize and take over the cannabis industry. Many of the people using these products are using them as a replacement for opioids and other street drugs. While we're in the middle of an overdose crisis where people are dying every day, it is unconscionable to deny access to cannabis, which is a viable substitute and is saving lives every day. A year and a half ago, I presented my idea for a project to provide cannabis edibles for free to people on the downtown east side. This project has now been running for over 16 months, without any assistance from council, you people wouldn't even talk to me about it. So in conclusion, and I guess I want to say, we've been 16 months of handing out edibles in the downtown east side, we're now twice a week. We were once a week for a full year, where we gave out seven or eight hundred edibles every time we went there, every Saturday. We're now Sundays and Thursdays at noon. I would encourage you to come down and see what we're doing, see the response, see how many people come to our table and get their care pack of cannabis edibles, and thank us for saving their lives, and telling us how they're now not using street drugs anymore. This stuff works. It works. There's studies out on this all over the place, like one of the other speakers said, the veil's been pulled away. This isn't something we don't know about anymore. And yet here we are, you're still trying to restrict cannabis instead of making it available. So in conclusion, cannabis should be regulated far less seriously than alcohol. Medical users deserve protection and access. You need to allow these dispensaries that have medicinal products beyond what the federal regulations are allowing to continue to exist. Hell with the laws, man, people are dying. The laws be damned when lives are at stake here. These medical dispensaries are not causing any problems in our neighbourhoods, they're saving lives. So they should not be shut down, they should not be in fear of shutting down, they should be encouraged and protected. This city should be protecting these places, we should be showing the world that we're not going to go along with this reefer madness bullshit that's been protecting the interests of corporations and law enforcement for way too long. I thank you for my time, I hope you will consider what's being said here, and I hope that the new council will be able to review all of this, and listen to what people have said here. These are very powerful words from good people, we deserve to be heard. Thank you.
Thank you. And our next speaker is number 18, Mason Nattou, followed by John Cassidy.
Mason Natch, use the name. You can hear me okay? Yes?
Yep.
Okay, great.
Go for it.
A couple of microphones for the people would be nice, you know, you could do this up a little better. Anyway. My colleague asked, how many of you spoke French? How many of you were in retail before you were on council? Any retail executives or bosses here? Anybody? Show of hands. One? One. Carrie? Or Mr. Jang, pardon, councillor Jang? Old suits, that's pretty good, looking spiffy. Mr. Roberts has got great experience with advertisers and stuff through the Olympics and things like that. We're really appreciative of the progressive choices of council to get us the Olympics, to get these new developments. The city is looking beautiful, I really appreciate what you've done, the bike lanes and things like that. You know, you funded a lot of things, you've been very flexible, we appreciate that. This is the most beautiful city in the world. And I've been in the cannabis industry a long time, before that I was in retail, I worked at Hudson's Bay Store number one downtown, I'm very proud of that. It's too bad it's being sold to who knows what interests. Guess there's nothing we can do, sign of the times. But retail's been floundering, it's tough. My wife works at Nordstrom, it's maybe one of the only holdouts in the high-end retail that's, that might make it through this tough time for retail. But anyway, we've contributed a lot to the city before I joined up with Weeds. And I joined up with Weeds because I had a vision that we didn't have to be this stereotypical dispensary that we get shown as in the news, you know. A lot of mud gets slung at the people that are progressively pioneering this industry, when all we're trying to do is help and heal people, and offer them an alternative on a Friday and Saturday night as well. You folks, go down Granville, we spend a lot of money on Friday, Saturday, for our police to be there, to make sure people don't beat the hell out of each other after drinking booze. And maybe you roll your eyes, but there's a picture up of a guy who got stabbed out in front of Caprice, or whatever it was, and these people have an alternative to smoke cannabis perhaps, instead of, you know, getting something that will put your testosterone past the limit. Anyway, you allow them up and down the street, you know, you can count the bars, it's incredible. It's clear, what's the restriction? One foot? I mean, come on. Anyway, I digress a little bit. I do want to thank this council for being so progressive. I mean, we're still in business after five years, speaking for Weeds, Glass and Gifts, and Mr. Briere. It's been an incredible journey, and out of it, I've really gotten a career. I interview a lot of people in this fine city, young entrepreneurs, people that see a new industry, see something exciting happening that they can be part of, that isn't just for perhaps the elite, arguably, as my friend said. It can be for everyone. And Weeds itself has over 200 employees. I've seen probably over 600 interviews, very proud of that. I've seen people transform from being down and out to having a life and having a career. It's something they know about, it's something they believe in. These people standing out here have worked their butts off, and they take it from all sides, from the police, from the media, from city council, from their rivals, from drug dealers and gang-hangers. We take risks every day. I've got 19, 20-year-old employees that don't have other options. I've had guys that were addicted to this and that because of injuries, hooked on opioids, and now they're executives. Look at the heroes out there that have worked so hard to get this experience. We can show the world how to do it, folks. I want to talk for a minute about Alberta and the other provinces, and what they're doing in the other cities. Edmonton just released their list of 250 applicants that have been approved for various zones around Edmonton. Edmonton can do it at 250, and they've got them all in and lined up, and they're going through the process, why the heck can't we? What one are we at out of the original 142? Have you guys gotten through them since 2015? I know, it's this ridiculous, tedious process, it's a bureaucracy, and you have to know who we are and what we're trying to do. God's sake, look out there, look at all these amazing people. We want to work with you. We want to be world leaders, we want this city, as beautiful as it is, to continue. And I want to continue to help people, don't take my job away, please. Don't take this great opportunity to give people this wonderful alternative. Work with us, we are ready to work with you. Come in and talk to me, I will leave my card with you. You can email me, you can text me, you can do whatever you like. I don't think this is a lame duck council, I think this is a legacy council, and you have a legacy to these people to continue to help them to have careers. They're wonderful entrepreneurs, and they're leading the world, folks. Give them a chance, thank you very much. Here's my card.
Thank you very much for being here tonight, and John Cassidy is our last registered speaker, and then I'll call three times, see if there are any other speakers. Welcome.
Hey. First of all, I want to say, I don't really have a dog in this fight, it's a southern expression, but I came to speak about the Robson hearing, but I have spoken on a marijuana dispensary application in the past to the Board of Variants that occurred, I guess, approximately, let's say, three weeks or a month ago, it was 212 East Hastings. And I represented part of the Chinese community down there, and a number of the dispensaries that are, at that time, operating illegally. There's one on Pender that the city currently has an enforcement on, that due to staffing problems, they haven't been able to close down. There's another one on Georgia that's approximately maybe 100 metres from Carnegie Centre. I think the strategy here would be to, first of all, I agree with the 300 metres, I think it's very applicable, and I think it's a balanced approach. Everything I've heard tonight, you know, from an observer's standpoint, comes across as, this is a business model, these people want a business, right? And this is the Wild West. And in finance, whatever you want to call it, investment, you always want to average in. And I think the notion of just going out there and throwing this thing to the wind is not the strategy. I think the federal government's done a good job in legislation, I think the provincial government, and if you look at some of the other municipalities and regions, you know, North Vancouver is decided that they're not going to have any dispensaries there, and West Vancouver, good luck. So my opinion is, your 300 metres is a balanced approach. Let's see where this goes. I'm not a diehard marijuana person, so that's it.
Okay. Thank you for being here tonight to speak on this.
What time's the Robson coming up, you think?
Okay. So I will just ask three times, are there any more speakers here tonight for item number one? Okay. Step up to the podium, please. Anyone else out there? You could just give us your name for the public record. You could just give us your name for the public record.
Yeah, my name is Carly Bauer. I work for Cannabis Culture, and thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council, for hearing us all out today. It's very appreciated. It means a lot to the community that you guys have put in an effort to hear us out throughout this process. The city of Vancouver has a very rich history of cannabis activism, from the Grass Town riots long ago to the first day-long four-twenty festival happening here at Victory Square, to the massive rallies and events that we're seeing now, even all sorts of trade shows happening regularly in our city that people from all over the city, the province, country, can come and enjoy and participate in. We've built a worldwide reputation for having some of the best cannabis available, as well as having one of the best consumption experiences. Working inside of Cannabis Culture's lounges, I see people travel not only from all over Canada to visit the cannabis community that is in this city, but from all over the world. I propose amendments include changes to how prohibitive the licensing process is. Besides being the clear ethical choice when considering medical patients and the opioid crisis, it would also be the best decision economically. Any bylaws or regulations that unnecessarily hurt cannabis consumers will not only impact this unique community of activists, medical patients, entrepreneurs, and consumers, it has and will continue to affect the local economy. Many people who work in the cannabis industry are young adults. We've already heard from Cannabis Culture that we have over a hundred employees. From Weeds, they have over six hundred employees. So let's just super shy numbers, say ten employees per dispensary. At a hundred dispensaries, that's a thousand jobs. So, putting more regulations on these, like, if we were to expand that number to even two hundred dispensaries, which still, there's clearly enough of a demand that we could have more than that in this city, and they would still be completely reasonable. People would still be looking for access. If you consider that, that's like two thousand jobs right there. That's without even including the head shops, the vapor lounges. Kinder Morgan stated that the total number of construction jobs for their project is twenty-five thousand, or sorry, twenty-five hundred for only two years in its submission to the National Energy Board. When you consider our industry has little to no environmental impact, that many of these jobs last more than two years, that these jobs are safe and often require only simple retail skills or even just a passion for this plant, and are not dangerous in any way, it's hard to see why the city would deny over a thousand jobs, potentially over two thousand job opportunities for people in this city. And please keep in mind, that is a low estimate, not including the head shops and the lounges here too. Anyone who's worked in the bar industry in Vancouver knows that you can't keep your friends long, because anybody who works in the bar industry or the retail industry cannot afford to live in Vancouver. They only stay here for a year, maybe two years tops, and you know they're going to have to leave eventually. I finally was able to keep friends for more than a year when I started working in the cannabis industry, because young people can actually afford to live here. I know the city of Vancouver cares about having people being paid reasonable wages in this city, and the cannabis industry does an excellent job of doing that. They pay people fairly, and they're young people, and it makes no sense that you would potentially have thousands of young people facing joblessness when we're in the middle of a housing crisis. People are struggling to leave the city or they face homelessness, and it makes no sense to me. Rather than deny the industry the opportunity to provide jobs, allowing people afford Vancouver's rental prices and put money back into the economy, please let our industry flourish. Help us, help the city by allowing more access to jobs and a safe alternative to alcohol and opioids. Thank you.
Thanks. Councilor Stevenson, they have a question.
Really a good-paying job for young people. What do you pay?
I'm getting paid eighteen dollars an hour. And I actually, I was lucky enough to find a company that saw how passionate I was for activism, that I have talent with writing, photography, video editing, and I actually am five credits short of finishing high school. There is no way I ever would have been able to afford to live in this city for more than six months had I not found a company that saw the potential I had, saw the passion I had, and has done everything they can. I've never seen a company--
Well, okay, I'm not--
It's amazing, but every--
I just want to know what your--
And--
What do your friends make?
Yeah.
Does everybody make eighteen dollars an hour, or what's--
Uh, not everybody. I do some more slightly active positions, but I'd say on average, we pay two, three dollars more than the average retailer bar position would.
So what do you pay?
Um, what's our, uh, start rate? We start at fourteen.
And then you pay tax on top of that?
Yes.
Thanks.
Okay. Thanks for stepping up to speak, sharing your thoughts. Any more speakers here on item number one? Last call, any more speakers for item number one? Okay, seeing none, we will close our speakers list, and how are we doing on public comments? We haven't had any. Okay, so with no public comments since this afternoon, we can close our public input and go to closing comments from staff first, and then questions.
Good evening, thanks. Mayor and council, Catherine Holm, chief licensed inspector. So I just wanted to make a few comments in response to many of the comments that we heard this evening. So again, just to remind that the definitional change in front of you tonight is really just restricted to including non-medical cannabis in the definition to ensure that the retail sale of non-medical cannabis is considered upon legalization. I want to clarify, and again, this is in the memo to you, retail outlets, again, per the legislation and forthcoming regulations from the provincial government are three parts. One, they've allowed municipalities to retain land use approval with respect to whether and how retail outlets are permitted. Second establishes a provincial licensing regime with various conditions. And third, a municipal licensing, business licensing exists as well. The province has not yet announced those regulations with the details around the license conditions. So when they are announced, we will be looking at where there is potentially inconsistency and overlap with our existing licensing conditions. So a few of those points were made this evening with respect to security requirements and also with respect to ownership corporations specifically. So staff will look at that when the regulations are available, identify any inconsistencies and gaps, and come back to you with amendments as required to ensure that we are in full alignment with the provincial requirements. Second, I'd just like to comment on the three hundred meter conversation. Again, as was noted earlier, this was established through public process and consultation when initially the guidelines were established. As of right now, we have forty-six locations that have received land use approval under that framework. So those locations, at this point, meet the provincial requirement under the licensing to apply as an operator for a provincial license. Our analysis suggests that there may be more opportunities available, but at this point, forty-six have approval. And again, our intent here is to support existing retail operators with that land use approval in advancing through the provincial licensing program with the intent of having retail operators, private retail operators licensed by the point of legalization. Thank you. I'd be happy to take questions if you have further questions.
Okay, thank you. And Councilor Carter, do you have questions?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. Yes, Ms. Holm? Thanks very much. My first question just has to do with the timing and the urgency, whether you sense there's an urgency, given that provincial regulations are coming down, for us to move on these changes at this time?
We've proposed at this time to ensure that the existing distancing and zoning requirements continue to apply once non-medical cannabis is available. Otherwise, it will be considered as any retail use, and sale could be permitted in any retail zone in the city.
Okay. And one of the speakers mentioned that there were twenty licenses accepted out of an estimated hundred. He said, you just said forty-six. Is forty-six out of an estimated how many originally?
Forty-six have land use approval, nineteen of which have completed the business licensing process--
Okay.
Fifteen of which are MMRUs and four compassion clubs. There continue to be seventy-four, seventy-five. It's a dynamic environment, about seventy-five operators that are operating outside of the zoning and licensing requirements at this time.
Okay. All right, thank you. There was a lot of concern raised around the three hundred meters. And I noticed that during the discussions very early on, you've stated that there was going, there is going to be a process to examine these regulations one year after the legalization. You know, at that time, is that the opportune time to look at, again, the three hundred meters? Is there an opportunity for the public to be engaged in consultations? And I'm specifically thinking about the point that was raised around density, and particularly density of and population that might be more in need of or have a demand for medical marijuana uses, especially for harm reduction?
Yeah, certainly. Good question. So I think, you know, we would look to, if council was to provide direction to us to reexamine those distancing requirements, staff could certainly engage in that process.
Right.
Yeah, certainly.
Yes, I think, I mean, part of why we wanted to, the report today is essentially taking the existing framework that we've established and just enabling it to support both medical and non-medical, so all cannabis, with the current rules. We have a regime in place that, by keeping that, as soon as legalization happens, the ones that are approved, we would support, provided they get support from the province. So this is a way, it's a kind of a simple way to enable this cleanly for now, with a commitment that there's a lot that's changing. This is a whole new environment, both with federal as well as provincial legislation. So we really think that there's a window of time where everyone will be transitioning, and that this is the kind of the cleanest way for us to do that. And then we do think, as with any policy, especially a new large program, it's smart for all of us to kind of look at that within kind of the first year of, now that we've settled and we have a whole new regime at all levels of government, and look at what's working and what's not working. And I think there's also a public perception that we have all of these, for those who are kind of against the retail model, I think there's a perception that we have retail models everywhere, but if we actually allow the rules to work, and there's enforcement tools in place, which there will be upon legalization, we can actually see whether the rules that we've had operating are working, and then adjust if needed.
Okay, okay, thank you. Ms. Holm, again, I noticed that you talked about after the new regulations are brought in provincially, there'll be another sort of time in which you likely will report back to us in ways in which we can make sure that we're aligned with those. Can you let me know if that's the appropriate time to bring forward council, you know, council direction to include distancing? Is, you know, is that, I'm looking for some direction in terms of when the best time is to bring that discussion forward and direction.
Sure. So what I was referencing specifically were the license-specific conditions--
Yes.
--for the, not related to land use, but more around licensing. And we don't, we don't know the provincial-specific regulations just yet. We anticipate we'll hear those in the next handful of weeks, following the federal government also announcing their regulations, which we expect to be sooner than that. And we, at that point, will look just at reconciling the difference between our license bylaw and any provincial license requirements, but not distancing.
So when would be a good time to bring that one forward?
I think further to Kay's point, it would be with respect to after the, we've had the opportunity to implement, to see the provincial regulations in play, to see the enforcement play out, and then to have a sense of how the industry, how the market is all responding, and how the retail landscape is showing up.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, Councilor Bremner, questions?
Yes, thank you. So first, just restrict, talking a little bit further about this three hundred meter restriction. So the one kilometer rule is placed essentially by the province. It's not so much by us, correct?
One kilometer applies to liquor retail outlets.
Right.
The province has placed no restrictions with respect to distancing or anything related to municipal land use approvals. The only thing they have said is it cannot be co-located with a liquor store.
Right. So, but theoretically, they could place a distance restriction, because we'd have to work around that?
They could, but at this point, they have not.
Okay. And then, I just see in here, maybe we haven't got that far yet, how are we measuring the three hundred meters? Because sometimes there's a debate around radius or whether or not it's by road. It can have an impact.
I defer to my planning colleague around how the measurement is done to the three As the crow flies, property line to property line.
Yeah. And are there other methodologies that we can consider on that? Because I do hear a lot of feedback, because it does run, we do run into trouble with that, I guess, with even liquor, as the crow flies, radius model, it becomes somewhat, it's not really relative to how an individual travels, like I'm not going to run through someone's backyard or smash through a building to get there. So it sometimes--
This is something that our development services team is more of a policy that they follow, they're not here today.
Right.
But it's certainly something that we can look at, it's kind of a standard process when we look at distancing for a lot of different things. So I think it would be a broader question that we could look into.
So then, further to that, we heard concerns about access, and, you know, the distancing restriction is, I guess, viewed or feared at the moment that it could play a role to reducing access. And some folks were feeling that, you know, perhaps they would, you know, we're only going to have twenty stores, and then other people are saying that we should have two hundred. So is there an estimation of what we can anticipate as, you know, can we make a guesstimate to how many stores we would have?
Yeah, I mean, at this point, we have forty-six with land use approval. We've done some analysis to have an estimate of how many more stores could be accommodated with the existing zoning, and it's probably approximately ten or so, but we are still--
So we have, we have here that, I was just reading this report that you guys supplied us with, so forty-six stores now that I guess are legally operating?
No, forty-six stores have land use approval--
Land use approval.
--nineteen of which have fully completed the legal process--
Sorry, yeah, that, right, 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 right. But then there's seventy-five that are sort of--
That are operating outside of the zoning and licensing requirements.
Right, right, right. So we've got that, and then there's approximately, how many liquor stores in the city?
How many liquor stores? I'm sorry, I don't know that off the top of my head.
Okay. So I think it was in the report, I think we have approximately seventy-seven. So I'm just, you know, we have seventy-seven with a one-kilometer rule, and I'm just trying to like figure this out for myself, like I'm not advocating for one or another, to be clear. I'm just trying to understand like how this would actually work in a real sense of what we're actually considering as to how many stores we would actually end up with, because at the moment, I just seem to be a little bit confused by it. And so I'm just trying to say, so I'll ask the questions, if that's all right, thanks. So I'm just trying to get a handle on like where we'll get to with this. So we've got seventy-seven liquor stores with a one-kilometer rule. I mean, if we go with a three hundred meter rule, then someone could extrapolate that that means you would have two hundred and thirty-one stores. Or you have nineteen stores approved now, and then maybe, or you have a feasibility of forty-six, and maybe you can have another ten more. So, you know, where do we land? How do we square that gap?
About sixty is sort of the estimate of how many stores could potentially operate with land use approval under the existing zoning requirements.
Perfect, perfect, okay, great. And so the one question I tend to ask a lot about this, and I recognize it's a federal issue because there's sort of some work safe issues as well related to this, and there's the consumption onsite. So we do have vape lounge, vapor lounges, you know, that we have, or we have supply, see people smoking in stores. So anyways, I'm walking down the street, I see, but, so we have people doing that. And then the other thing is, is that, you know, on Davie, there's, you know, the Hookah Lounge and things like this nature. So I'm wondering, like, you know, how do we find the balance in that? Because one thing I'm really concerned, and it really jumps out to me in reading these initial regulations, is that it says you can't consume it outside, you can't be intoxicated outside, but you can consume it in anywhere, basically. So, and by law, there's so many strict, no smoking laws. So have there been conversations with other levels of government? Do we understand where this is going to go, how we're going to kind of square that circle?
I just wanted to, Ian Dixon from the Law Department, I just wanted to mention about the consumption lounges, the vapor lounges. Those are all illegal under our bylaws. There's no legal, the Hookah lounges have in fact been, have been prosecuted and actions have been taken against them. They're supposed to be closed. They haven't, but those, all those consumption lounges are contrary to the city's bylaws.
Okay, fair enough, appreciate that.
And further to that, the--
I'm over my time, but if you can finish the answer, that'd be great, if I could get it.
The province has said no public consumption or model, or consumption cafes at this point, again, citing work safe sort of concerns that need to be addressed as well.
Okay, Councilor Jang?
Thank you very much. Just making sure I got the clarification questions right here, what we're doing tonight. We've had a lot of discussion, I met with many of you many times over the last few years about cannabis, but tonight, the text amendment is simply to change some definitions so that retail cannabis sale, not just MMRU or medical marijuana, can be sold in the city of Vancouver.
Yes. Yes.
So that's really an expansion, then, of the definition. So it's not just medical marijuana, but it's retail sale, correct?
Yes.
Okay. The provincial government and federal government have passed their general legislation, but regulations to the specifics have yet to be released. Is that correct?
Yep.
And they've said, they've indicated a few times when it might be coming, but we know that they're still working on it.
That's also correct.
All right. Despite all this, we've also had some new surprises, certainly with some of the federal legislation. Like today, on the top page of the Globe and Mail, I saw that open growing, open grow cannabis farms is going to be allowed in Canada, and no one anticipated that. So would it be fair to say, then, that we're still working in a bit of a vacuum of information and specifics?
This is a big policy change for Canada nationwide. Yes, there's a lot of moving parts.
Okay. So thank you for that. Thank you. I have no further questions. I'm ready to move the staff recommendations today. Given that, and I move the staff recommendations, it's contained in the hearing. Today, October 17th, coming up, is the day cannabis becomes legal. Congratulations, everyone, you did it. And I'm very proud of the work you did, and I'm proud of how we're trying to de-stigmatize marijuana. I know we've disagreed over the years about regulations. You know, you guys are saying, you know, it should be more freely available, and I'm saying, well, it's all about regulation and taxing the hell out of it. And I've always said that. And may not agree with all that sometimes, but that's just, that's my job as a legislator, and you, your job as a retailer or health provider of some sort, right? But today, the public hearing is not about distancing. The public hearing isn't so much about density, you know, I can argue, is it per capita, per household density are we looking at? I mean, there's all the different questions that will change, change the definitions. But it's really, it's really to allow, for the first time, normal retail sales of cannabis in the city of Vancouver. It's not hiding under medical marijuana-related uses. I know that Mr. Larson, who is here, he says, well, I'm not even going to bother lying, saying it's medical marijuana, it's just retail use. And we agree. We all knew it was. And so this simply brings us into line with that perspective. For those reasons, I'm supporting the staff recommendations. Certainly, we know that there's going to be, there is a vacuum of information yet from the provincial and federal governments. There are still policy items that are outstanding, like today, I referenced the open field growing. How is that going to affect agricultural land use in the future, things like that? But certainly, we are set up to go forward on October 17th as an allowable use, which is great. But it still will mean a lot more work in the future. And for this, not, maybe not perhaps of this council, but the future council, as the regulations come out, as they're tested to see what works and what doesn't, it is very much a work in progress, and it's going to continue to evolve over time. Many of us have worked together and fought the federal government over prohibition. I've never believed that's worked. You're absolutely right about the opioid crisis. Is it going to be a great substitute? Well, research will show, now that we're finally able to do proper clinical trials, certainly that's why I'm returning to UVC, for example, is to actually start to do that work, right? Not just take it, you know, like, you know, it's not a proper randomized clinical trial, for example, right? And that's my training, and that's what I do for a living. So I think this is a good step forward. It brings us into line with provincial regulations for October 17th, so that it's no longer, we're not no longer disguising a lot of what we're selling as a medical marijuana, but actual retail use. So with that, I support that. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks, councillor Jang. And we have a second for that. Okay. Motion is on the floor. And councillor Carr?
Yes, thanks. Thanks, Mr. Mayor. First, I just, I just want to clarify that, and perhaps it's a question to you, because we are in public hearing, this is not a regular report to council, if I were to, is it proper process for me to bring forward an amendment that, for example, would ask staff to reexamine distancing and security rules in an upcoming review? Was that more appropriate as a motion to council, as opposed to an amendment to this set of regulations?
I think that would be a motion to council, wouldn't be directly related to the decision, the recommendations before council.
Yes, I know it's not specifically related to this. Okay, I was just seeking direction on that. Thank you. I will speak in favor of these regulations, and I do want to indicate my intention to bring forward such a motion at a future date. I want to thank the speakers for coming and for being very clear in terms of the concerns raised. And some of those concerns had not to do with the very specifics of this report. The specific one, of course, is the distancing, because this does duplicate the distancing issue. And I think in my question and staff's response, you heard a willingness on staff's part to hear a request from council to reexamine that. So that's going to be in council's hands, at a, not tonight, but at a future date. In terms of the, I also want to thank the speakers for acknowledging the leadership of Vancouver on this issue, in terms of being, being progressive enough to actually set down some rules to enable medicinal dispensary, marijuana dispensaries to exist in this city. Some of the issues raised were not, are not in our control at all. For example, the issue of what kind of products can be sold under the federal regulations. I was part of a tour, and so thank you for those of you who helped produce that tour. Others, councillor Louis, for example, were part, were part of that tour, too, of a number of dispensaries. And it became very clear that many medicinal products have dosages that are incredibly important for their medical use and effectiveness, and I think there needs to be pressure applied on the federal government to recognize that. But that, I gather, is, yeah, is sort of in process or in progress, one hopes, and the city could become an advocate on that, too. In terms of these amendments, they are clearly to enable the existence of non-medical cannabis outlets, recreational cannabis outlets. Otherwise, there's no rules under which we can enable those to be licensed and exist within a city. So it's for that reason that I'm supporting these rules. They're practical, they respond to new changing landscape in terms of the federal and provincial laws. And so, but I do think this is an ongoing discussion, and I really appreciate staff for the work you've done on this. It's an incredible amount of work. It is very progressive, and it is, it is a, it is a process and a path that we're on here. So thank you.
Thanks, councillor Carr. I don't have anyone else registered on the queue to speak to this motion. So I think we're ready for the question. Councillor Jang's motion, ready to vote on screen. Make this decision, and we have all 10 votes in favor of the motion from councillor Jang. So we've approved those recommendations from staff. Thanks to staff. Thanks to everyone for coming to speak on this, and obviously, stay tuned. More changes to come in the near future, I expect. So thanks for being here tonight. And we are on to item number two on the public hearing agenda tonight, which is the rezoning, increasing housing choice in Grandview Woodland, proposed amendments to the zoning and development bylaw. Madam Clerk, can you please read the application and the summary, of course, upon as received?
This is an application by the general manager of Planning, Urban Design and Sustainability to amend the zoning and development bylaw to increase opportunities for housing choice and to strengthen shopping nodes in Grandview Woodland.